I'd like to call to order the Westmont Village Board Meeting of July 29, 2021, at 6:00 PM and ask our birthday clerk, Simski, for roll call, please.
Trustee Barker.
Here.
Trustee Brady.
Here.
Trustee Guzzo.
Here.
Trustee Little.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
And Trustee Samanovich is absent tonight. Attorney Zemanek.
Here.
Village Manager May.
Here.
Assistant Village Manager Parker.
Here.
We have two fire chiefs, but we are police and fire.
Yeah.
So if you please rise and join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone, and before we do open forum, because I understand there's someone who's filling out a form to speak, today, the DuPage County Health Department recommends wearing masks, again, indoor, public places, and I think we will, that's going to happen here at Village Hall, so we've been wearing our mask until we're at our seat, and then when you talk, we've got the, whatever you call those, the screens up.
Oh, yeah.
So I just want to make mention of that, so we'll be doing the same here in Village Hall.
Yeah, I mean, DuPage County Health Department did, you know, reaffirm and support that recommendation, but it is, yesterday, it was already the recommendation of the Governor's Office, Illinois Department of Public Health, and of course, that's on the immediate heels of the latest CDC recommendation, so it is, the biggest difference is masking in indoor, public places, public places, not just public buildings, but places where the public is expected or invited to be, this would include stores and out in the public, and, but, like, in the workplace, those same parameters, you know, apply like they did before, so it's more for, so, for public buildings, for these meetings, for our own staff, working in the Village Hall, the Village Hall remains closed, for example, so the only public accessible areas are the front lobby outside of meetings, and the masking requirement, vaccinated or unvaccinated, doesn't make the difference, the masking is expected. Face covering.
And before we go to open forum, I'd ask Chief O'Hare, why don't you, usually it's under my report, but I'm gonna, since we started talking about the mask recommendations, I'll ask him to give an update on the COVID virus.
Thank you, Mayor. So just a quick update, the positivity rate in Illinois is approximately 4%, the positivity rate in DuPage County is 3.7%, to give some reference, the positivity rate in DuPage County is, July 3rd, was 1.1, just to give you some perspective where we are and where we were, and then, DuPage County average new cases per day, 75 new cases per day, and in DuPage County as of July 3rd, it was 15 cases per day, so just to give you some perspective on that, and in closing, to echo Chief Riley's comments that he's made throughout this process, we continue to advocate for social distancing when possible, hand washing and the wearing of face coverings when necessary.
Any questions? Chief, thank you. We'll move on to open forum, I do have one request, Gina Pirelli, 245 Blacklock Drive, requesting to veto, is it Senate Bill 818?
818, yeah.
818, you come up to the podium, and again, it's Gina Pirelli?
Yeah, so, this has to do with the schools, and I know there's so much stuff going on, but I, um, I don't know if you guys are even aware of, like, all the bills going on, there's so many, but the bill is on the Governor's desk right now, and, and I'll pass, I have copies of it, but just to give an example of what this new sex ed bill will pertain to, and I don't mean to be graphic, but, what am I tell you, seems a little odd, um, it says, for gate, and parents are opposed to this, just to let you know, but, and anybody can call the Governor's desk and ask him to veto it, but basically, K through second grade, they're going to identify different kinds of families, define gender, gender identity and gender role stereotypes, list, sorry, this is kind of blurry, list their names of their body parts and genitals, grades three for fifth will explain human sexual development and the role of hormones, describe the role of hormones that play in physical, social, cognitive and emotional changes, they will be able to define difference between cisgender, transgender, gender, no binary, gender expansive, gender identity, explain that gender expression and gender identity, sixth through eighth, define, this is where it gets disgusting, vaginal, oral and anal sex, define sexual identity and explain a range of identities related to sexual orientation, grades, and there's more, I'm just kind of going really quick, grades nine through 12 are supposed to differentiate between sex assigned at birth, gender identity and gender expression, define reproductive justice and explain its history and how it relates to sexual health, parents are opposed to this, it's on the Governor's desk, I can leave these copies, just, you can see the pictures in the book, they're graphic, pornographic, and I would hope that all of you would like to ask the Governor to veto this bill.
And I'm assuming it's passed the House and the Senate?
It's on the Governor's desk, it's been there since June, I'm not sure, I'm, well, I'm glad he hasn't vetoed or passed it yet, but I wish all of you as citizens, please call and ask him to veto this bill.
Okay, thank you.
Leave those with the chief, thank you.
Thank you, is anybody else here for anything that's not on the agenda, now's the time. Seeing that, then I'll move on to reports, I close open forum, my, mine's the first one, our Police Public Safety Committee will be, next meeting is September the 22nd, 9:00 AM, right here, and I'd ask Chief Gunther if he could come up, I know next Tuesday is National Night Out and the police open house, and I'd probably like him to give a little bit more detail about what's going on at the police station.
Thank you, Mayor, yes, next Tuesday, August 3rd, will be our National Night Out and Open House for the Police Department, it's, will be at the police station at 500 North Cass Avenue at, starting at 5:00, ending at 8:00, we'll have plenty of activities for families to participate in, we'll have a static display of vehicles, including our SWAT vehicle, squad cars, bike patrol officers, we'll have a bike demonstration, we'll have hot dogs provided by the Lions Club, so there'll be plenty of food while, until it runs out, we have 300 hot dogs, so we'll see if we can make it through all, it's, we have lots of stakeholders in the community that will be participating and talking about their organizations, so, we have EMA, Westmont Fire Department, Westmont Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association, a bunch of other groups, too lengthy to name, but people that have been there in years past, we do have one, one surprise company that'll be there that I'm not even going to mention, but if you go to our-
Mystery surprise?
It's a little bit of a mystery, we're pretty happy that they're going to be showing up at our, our open house, so, so, anyway, so it's going to be good, please bring out your families and ready for a good time.
And that's five days.
Correct.
Thank you. Our next 100th Anniversary Committee will be August the 5th at 3:30, here, again, the police, Public Works and Fire have announced open houses over the next several months, all of which will be part of our 100th Anniversary Celebration, so check the website for Public Works and Fire, our license plates, 100th Anniversary license plates are still available, they're on sale to the public, $25 per license plate, you can sign up at Village website. We've been interviewing and concluded the 100th Anniversary Video, now it needs to be added and put together, we videotaped a number of interviews from longtime residents, and we captured their thoughts and memories of Westmont over the years, we're expecting to have that video completed in time for our November 10th Birthday Anniversary Celebration. I know that they were able to start this a year and a half or two years ago, and they were able to talk to a couple individuals who since passed, Bill Wayback and Bob Gleason and Levek, Mark, he's still with us, Marcel, and then they had all other people this weekend, so we're looking forward to putting that together and making it available, the November 10th will be our celebration, right here in front of Village Hall, we're going to have a couple dedication ceremonies, the, and the completion of a new time capsule, which is planning to be buried on the west side of Village Hall, which is, it's just next door, it's a little plaza area, we'll have refreshments, music, and maybe even some fireworks, the James Addington Plaza will be dedicated then, we thought we'd do it on his birthday in September, we're going to wait to do it on the 100th Anniversary Birthday on November 10th, so that dedication will be that evening, this year, there will be no holidays events over Thanksgiving weekend, we've adjusted that, the parade will be the following weekend on Saturday, December the 4th, and again, we want to make this parade, in the past, for the 75th, we had an actual 75th Anniversary Parade, but with COVID, we were very difficult to plan that, so now we're going to make our holidays parade our 100th Anniversary Parade, so we want to spice it up, get more people involved, so look, stay tuned for more details about that, again, it's Saturday, December the 4th, instead of the Saturday after Thanksgiving, and that's all I have, and I, other than wishing Clerk Simski a happy birthday, as you can see, she's got, maybe you can't see her, but she's got lovely roses here for her birthday, and today is her birthday, so happy birthday.
Thank you.
Clerk Simski.
I just want to remind everybody that the community-wide garage sale will be the weekend of August 6th, 7th and 8th, to sign up and participate, visit the Village website, the list of sales will be provided by Westmont Special Events, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Euro.
Thank you, Mayor, just a few items tonight, our next Public Works Committee meeting is September 23rd, 4:30, right here at Village Hall, and mark your calendars, Public Works Open House is still planning it for September 25th, 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, details will be coming out here pretty soon, and then just a quick recap, although I couldn't make it, I know quite a few friends and family were at the Public Works Cruising Nights night, and it was a blast, over 346 total vehicles, which is kind of exciting, again, thanks to all the Public Works staff and all the other communities in the county that came and represented, and I know everybody had a great time, and that is all I have, sir, thank you.
Well, thank you, trustee Little.
Thank you, Mayor, our next Administration Finance Committee meeting will be August the 12th at 4:30, right here in Village Hall, please feel free to come out and join us for that, there are three more art shows at Cruising Nights this year, they're still set for August the 5th, August the 19th and September the 2nd, please go to our website for Westmont Special Events to participate, there's also more information on the Village website, if anyone is interested in being a sponsor or joining me in volunteering at the Westmont Special Events Cruise Nights, sign up online at westmontevents.com or call the office at 630-829-9378, that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Barker.
Thank you, Mayor, Westmont First Committee will meet on Monday, August 16th, at 6:00 PM, at the Westmont Library, and according to the census, bulletins and website, the final count numbers are due on that day, and we all know what that could mean to our community, so, for all the world to see, August 16th could be a big day, the EIC Environmental Improvement Committee will meet Monday, August 2nd, at 5:30 PM at the library, and I wanted to mention that one of the four priorities of the committee is to bring educational and accurate information to our residents, environmental information is always changing and always updating, and over the past six months, we have worked as, with the Communications Department to put out over 20 news releases, and currently, our group is finalizing our communications plan for the entire year in an effort to make events and educational support more synchronized, we appreciate the work of the Communications Department and the help of reaching our residents through all forms of media, so it's, we're getting better organized so that the information that comes out is timely with the events, and as you know, it's a very active group, and, again, they wanted to make sure that they're doing the best job that they can for us, that is all, thank you.
Thank you, we'll go over to trustee Guzzo.
Thank you, Mayor, first, I want to let everyone know our next Fire Public Safety Committee meeting is going to be October 22nd at 4:30, everyone is invited to attend, and then, a week from tonight, August 5th, Fire Truck Cruising Nights, I hope to see everybody there, we've already got the order in for nice weather, so it should be a fun night, and then, congratulations to Public Works, I also wasn't able to be there, but I heard it was a great turnout, and then, last but not least, I do want to wish the clerk a very happy birthday. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, trustee Brady.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to welcome the swimmers to Westmont, we're blessed to have the FMNC auditorium, and they've been hosting the following statewide swim meets, the Illinois Swimming Age Group Championships are on Thursday, July 22nd through Sunday, July 25th, the Illinois Swimming Senior Championships are on Thursday, July 29th through August 1st, and also, Central Zone 14, which is a statewide item, that's from ages 14 and up, the Swimming Championships are on Thursday, August 5th and Sunday, August 8th, the next Community Development Committee meeting will be on Thursday, August 26th, that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, and trustee Samanovich is, is not here, so she would, the Ville Alph Reader Report, we're hiring here at the Village, various stages of the hiring process, the Community Development Department, Permit Coordinator, two full-time, one part-time, Deputy Director of Community Development and Planning, Fire Department's Administrative Assistant, three, Information Technology Department Help Desk Technician and Public Works Department Mechanic, additionally, we have five new police officers, starting the academy at the end of August, so, if no one asks anything else, we'll move on to any items to be removed from the consent agenda, any trustees see anything, if not, I'd ask Manager May to please read.
Thank you, and if I could, I wanted to kind of just describe something first regarding the consent agenda itself, so, besides the finance ordinance and the purchase orders and sometimes resolutions and proclamations, there are purchase orders of a certain dollar amount are, are itemized on the consent agenda so that they're itemized and brought to your attention and can have separate discussion, the, all the other purchases, even if by purchase order under smaller amounts are aggregated into what's the finance ordinance, actually, the, the bigger purchase orders are part of the finance ordinance sometimes too, but, the, the reason I'm describing any of this is that there are multiple purchase orders for one consultant, and that's the engineering services, and what I wanted to explain was, is that without the staff Village Engineer anymore, we do contract with, it's Primera engineers, but specifically for Anthony Bryant, you know, but an individual to act as the Village Engineer, so there's one purchase order that is a lump sum, that is for the aggregate amount of just the daily, or, you know, the, the daily routine stuff that we use a Village Engineer for, and then our arrangement with the Primera is that when we have specialty projects that are kind of outside the, not outside the scope, but when they're large all by themselves, they're itemized out and they're hired separately, so there's a, we're still hire them under the terms of that agreement, but they've got a separate purchase order for that project-specific item, so, that's why you'll hear their names several times on here when we go through that, so, the consent agenda this evening starts with Village Board Minutes, Board to Consider Approving the Minutes of the Village Board Meeting Held, July 15, 2021, next is Finance Ordinance Number Seven, in the aggregate amount of $909,008.17, first purchase order is Primera Engineers, limited, $107,540, this is specifically for the 2021 MFT Street Resurfacing Project, the engineering portions of that, next purchase order, Primera Engineers, $23,340, specifically for work done at the Addington Plaza reconstruction, next purchase order, Primera Engineers, $32,000, is a, we're investigating the, the facility rehab to accommodate a vendor in the depot, and this is labeled Depot Retail Space Building Improvements Engineering, next purchase order is Ken's Landscaping and Supply, $48,950, that is for work done on the Ogden Avenue, Ogden Avenue Median landscaping, which is over by Oakwood Drive, last purchase order is Primera Engineers at around $100,000, and this is the general open purchase order for annual regular services, those purchase orders total, $311,830, brings the total of purchase orders, together with Finance Ordinance Number Seven, to $1220,838.17, and that's the consent agenda, Mayor.
Do I have a motion to approve as read?
Motion to approve as read, Little.
Second, Nero. Motion made in second, any comments or questions, anybody, seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Motion passes, new business A, 203 Robinson Lane, a permit fee waiver, Board to Consider Ordinance Approving a Waiver of Fees and Replacement Requirements Under the Heritage Tree Ordinance, the owners of the property at 203 Robinson Lane are requesting a replacement cost waiver in the amount of $12,750 associated with the removal of a, it says 25 inches around, right, Steve?
Yeah, diameter.
Height, diameter, I'll take it, yeah.
Press height diameter, yeah.
25-inch honey locust tree, manager May.
The, the, this is a combination, the discussion occurred at the Public Works Committee, and the Heritage Tree Ordinance, which is a tree preservation ordinance, has many applications that have come into play primarily with commercial developments, and the ordinance has been followed, and in situations where removal can't be avoided, as defined, removal is accommodated in that ordinance, and in other cases, if the tree can be preserved, and, you know, with redesign, we will encourage or, you know, facilitate redesign, and in one case, in a residential property, you even change the setback of the home to preserve a tree that was in the rear yard, that was very early on with this ordinance, this is the, the, what is, does not contain in the ordinance, well, in the ordinance, it says, you know, the private property tree still already has the right to remove the tree, but the ordinance says, well, if you're going to remove it anyway, even though we've determined it's a heritage tree, this is the fee to do that, and it's a calculation per inch diameter, and this is the cost, in a commercial application, it's much easier to supply, so it's an incentive, a disincentive to remove the tree, an incentive to preserve it, and usually redesign, you know, if it, I'm just going to make up one's parking lot, you know, you can change the design of the parking lot to accommodate, you know, the trees, in this case, the residential property is building a deck in a rear yard, there's a tree that's affected, they presented to you all the, all the different possibilities for going around it that don't work because it created different problems, and there was agreement that was unavoidable to remove, and then, but if the ordinance says, okay, well, then it's worth $12,750 to cut down this tree to get your permit to build the deck, so this fee waiver, on, not, you're approving it tonight, but the agreement at the Public Works Committee meeting was that the fees associated just with the portion for the removal of the tree are, are to be waived, but the rest of the permit fees, the rest of the permit requirements, all other items are satisfied, so the before you today is really just a building permit fee waiver.
Would I have a motion? Motion to approve, Nero.
Second, Guzzo.
Motion made in second, any comments, I think we've covered this at a committee meeting in quite detail, and, anybody?
Yes.
Nobody?
No.
All right, I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Motion passes, new business B, 350 North Grant Street, lot subdivision, Board to Consider Ordinance Approving a preliminary plot of subdivision and a final plot of subdivision to create two lots at 350 North Grant Street in the R3 Single Family Resident District, Director Sylvester.
I'm going to ask, I'm not sure, so we did, with the COVID protocols back in place, we did, the staff does have a Zoom link, so I don't know if Bruce is connected as a hybrid meeting, but Jeff, you know, wouldn't know that or not, but I can present the item as well with Bruce, not, oh, he ran up the stairs, he's like panting.
You're on.
350 North Grant, Bruce.
Sorry for the delay, there's not a Mr. Passavento here, so this item is a request to approve a preliminary plot of subdivision and a final plot of subdivision to split the lot at 350 North Grant, it'll create two buildable, single-family lots, it's gone through engineering review and forestry review, and the recommendation is to approve.
Does a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Barker. Motion made in second, any comments, P and Z approved it unanimously, okay, anybody in the audience, seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Motion passes, new business C, 207 North Cass, a B1 permit for Kim's Uncle Pizza, Board to Consider Ordinance Allowing Uncle Pizza Projects LLC DBA Kim's Uncle Pizza to obtain a B1 permit to open a pizza restaurant at 207 North Cass, Director Sylvester.
So as you just explained, Mr. Mayor, the request is for a B1 permit, as all new businesses in our B1 downtown district are required to obtain, the applicants are here, if they want to come up, there's a brief presentation they'd like to make explaining their business, and they'd be available for questions.
And this is the Uncle Pete's site?
Hi, thank you. Hey, everyone, my name's Ed Marchewski, this is my colleague Cecily Rodriguez Federighi, and we're both the partners at Uncle Pete's, Uncle Pizza Projects, which is trying to open up Kim's Uncle Pizza, I'm not sure if this is working, oh, go ahead and go back. Uncle Pete's Pizza, as you know, is located at 207 North Cass Avenue, it's been a member of the community for over 40 years, serving delicious pizza, that's Kim Sinclair, she's about 85 years old right now, she's been working there for over 40 years, Kim is actually a friend of Maria, my mother, Maria Marchewski, back in the late 70s, they were members of the Korean American Women's Association, and that's how I got to know Kim, Maria, my mother, has been an entrepreneur, along with my father, who was a Chicago police officer, they opened up a tavern together and a restaurant together and a butcher shop, when he passed away, my, my father left this bar to my mother, and this bar, Maria's, is something that my brother and I actually helped my mother manage about 15 years ago, and that's how I got involved in small retail, food and beverage business, we took over the bar and it became known as one of the best craft beer bars in America, and has been featured on multiple TV shows, over time, due to the success of that bar, we opened up a Korean and Polish restaurant called Kimski, and we opened that in neighborhood of Bridgeport, and we started pursuing this food and beverage program that we're continuing on today, after opening this place, we expanded, we expanded the restaurant and provided more seating and services to our community, and we also then started a craft brewery called Morris Community Brewing Company, and it's also located in McKinley Park in Chicago, the brewery is a large taproom and manufacturing facility that's located on the first manufacturing district in Chicago, called the Central Manufacturing District, these are images of some of the taprooms of, of these breweries, we opened up an additional facility on the north side of Chicago called the Life on Morris Place, and that's, this is like a small place where we serve hot dogs, so when you brought up hot dogs, officer, I was like, I better be there, I got to check out if they're doing Vienna beef or if they're doing real sausage from Mikowski, so hopefully I'll make it, but we're also part of this large non- But we're also part of this large nonprofit organization. I'm the director of Public Media Institute. And during the last two years during the COVID crisis, a lot of our restaurants, our bars, everything had to shut down too to the mandates. But instead of giving up, we basically converted our kitchens into a feeding program called the Community Kitchen. And over the span of like 12 months, we fed over 140,000 meals to people throughout Chicagoland through the use of our kitchens at Maria's, Kimski, and Mars Community Brewing. And through that process as well during the COVID, I hooked up with my partners and my friends at the Pizza Zone, and we opened up Pizza Fried Chicken Ice Cream during the middle of the pandemic. And just immediately after opening, like a few months after we opened, we became known as one of the best pizza places, not only in Chicago, but we've been listed as one of the best new restaurants in America by Esquire Magazine. So this love of pizza brought us together. And then one day, my mother said, hey, Kim is retiring. She's had a stroke. She barely works there. She hardly does anything there. Are you interested in working with her to bring pizzas back to Westmont? I'm like, I don't know. So I went to my pizza partners, and one of them grew up in Westmont and ate Uncle Pete's Pizza every Friday night with his family. And we just started laughing and thinking, wouldn't that be ridiculous if we took over Kim's Pizza Place and started making pizza with her? So we actually stopped by and talked to Kim one day. And that's Bradley, who used to live a few blocks from here. And we spoke to her about possibly taking over the business or working with her. She decided she wanted to get out of the business, so we, we decided to purchase it. Of course, while we were negotiating purchasing your property and business, a small electrical fire happened in the corner of the building. And then we were like, oh, no, now what do we do? My mother, basically, as a good Korean Catholic woman she is, guilted me into purchasing the building with my partners and going ahead with the deal. So we're here today. We've been going through the process of properly registering all the documentation needed in the different community office, as well as the permit office. And we're delighted to say that we're, we are finally here at the, at the beginning of our pizza journey to try to make the best pizza we possibly can in the universe and provide it to the community of Westmont and DuPage County. This is a, this is our, this is, Kim's Uncle Pizza is an homage to Kim Sinclair, who used to own Uncle Pete's Pizza. And we hope that we'll be able to work with Kim to continue to bring her recipes while we present some of our own pizza to the neighborhood. The business is meant to be a carryout and delivery business or pickup business. It's basically just maintaining the tradition. When I was in high school, I delivered pizzas for Uncle Pete's Pizza. I went to Downers Grove South. I used to, and I, I really want to believe this, but wasn't there an incredible hobby shop that sold lead figures, Dungeons and Dragons figures? What was that called?
Bubs.
I miss that place, and if I had a chance, I would bring it back. But we're excited to work with, with you, Mayor, and, and the board of trustees to make sure that we do an excellent job of providing high-quality food to the neighborhood. I'd also like to lend my expertise to the arts. As you may, I may have mentioned, involved with Public Media Institute, we're a nonprofit devoted to the arts and community for over 20 years. We've worked with every major institution in Chicagoland. We just opened up a space with the city of Chicago in the cultural center called Buddy, in which we sell products that are manufactured by artists and designers in Chicago as a way to help promote the sale and, and promotion of artists in Chicagoland. So I'd be happy to help work with any arts program that you have. But yeah, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to present. And if you have any questions, I could, we could totally answer them for you.
About to say a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Number one, when, I understand it was a fire. How long ago was the fire? That was in October.
The fire took place in October of last year, sir.
Okay, so it's vacant since October last year.
That's true.
Okay, that's the second fire in that building. It was a fire, when Kim had the place several years ago, it was a grease fire there also.
Exactly.
So this is the second fire that's been in that building.
Yes, I'm aware of that.
I have a couple more questions. In a statement, I don't know if you put this in, you're going to leave the building as is? What do you mean by as is?
Well, we're, we're cleaning the building up.
Yeah.
And we're making the minor repairs that were, that were suggested through the permitting progress.
Okay, you're going to repair, is this still going to be a carryout like it is now?
Exactly.
At the counter right up real fast?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then number two, you showed a picture of the right side of the building where the siding was coming off?
Yes, sir.
Might go back to that a minute?
Yes.
Are you, you're going, that looks very unsafely, it's unsafe.
We're repairing this.
Are you going to replace that siding?
Absolutely. We're replacing the entire side, the whole wall.
I think what he means also by as is, is we want to keep it as traditional as possible. We're not trying to like change the entire building and make it different. Like, we're just going to clean it up, take, make the necessary repairs to make the building safe again. But we're not trying to, you know, paint it purple and put sparkles on.
As far as I'm concerned, that building hasn't been touched in years and years and years. It's really dilapidated. Matter of fact, it has a lot of, it had a lot of potential years ago. As you look at the north side of the building, where you got all cracked, cracked bricks and concrete, you could have tables there with an umbrella, even in the backyard. You have a space between the garage.
Yes.
And also a rebellion. That can look so beautiful and draw outside, let me finish. That's my turn. Number two, with the garage in the back, I don't know what it's used for, but there's vines going from the ground up to the roof line. That is unsafe and unsightly. I went back, I went there twice last couple of days. I didn't go in the garage, but the door is either missing or you can't close the door because there's vines going into the doorway. I mean, no one has touched that property in years. I think Kim made a good pizza. I used to buy there, but I stopped going there because the, the building literally looked, it didn't look very sanitary. So you have a, you have a long way to go, to tell you the truth, to get that building up to par.
But we're.
You go a step further. Also, on the south side of the building, you have an outside vent, exhaust vent. I saw that thing open. I figured, oh, they're renting the building. I go on the inside, the electrical meter is missing. There's no electricity in the building right now. So I just, I heard you saying, and you showed pictures of other buildings, it has nothing to do with this building whatsoever. I understand where you're coming from, but I have to say, you have a long way to go to bring this property up to par.
I would agree with you that we definitely have to make major repairs, like as noted right here. We also have to fix the electrical. The meter is off because we're not allowed to put it on because we don't have a permit. And we're not allowed to touch the building because there's no, we can't get a permit issued. So we have to go through this process in order to proceed with the repairs. So that's one of the main reasons why that building is in a decrepit state. We would obviously love to actually apply in the future, once we get the building fixed and once we get the business running, to see if we could actually make pizzas that people want. We would love to expand to have a couple outdoor seating areas, if that's allowed here in the city of Westmont.
You want to draw the customers in. Right now, the appearance looks terrible there, the building.
Absolutely. It's, definitely needs a lot of help, sir. But we are prepared to make sure that it's an awesome place. We want to make it look as nice as the other places that I presented earlier to you.
And the DuPage Health Department is very strict.
Absolutely.
You got to dot the I with the DuPage Health Department.
Absolutely. All health departments.
They think of sanitation, and they want people not to get sick.
Absolutely.
They're, I don't know about the city of Chicago, but I'm talking about DuPage County. They are strict here.
Absolutely.
Perfect.
I hope so, sir.
Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't mean to pick you up, but you're, you're walking into something here that's been neglected for many years.
I blame my mother. Okay? It's her fault, but we're going to make sure we make it an awesome place and a great contribution to the community and bring it back to what it used to be, back in like the 80s and 90s when I worked there.
I hear what you're saying. I'll believe it when I see it.
I can't wait to share pizza with you.
I'd be one of your customers. But why it is now? No.
We totally agree. We were grossed out by it. Totally, we understand exactly what you're talking about. Yeah.
That's all I, Mr. Mayor.
We definitely want to, we definitely want to make sure that we address all your concerns, and we'll definitely fix that place up. You'll be happy to bring your family there. And I can't wait till you tell us one day, Ed, you're right. You do make the best pizza in the country.
When, when would you start on this?
The minute we get that permit, the minute we get that building permit, we're going straight in there and getting to work, sir.
Without those, step one is the building permit? That's right.
Yeah, go ahead. Without the building permit.
What is the steps we're going to follow them on?
To it, so.
Pardon me.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Hey, my pleasure. Good to meet you all, and happy birthday.
So any use or business in the village that first requires a zoning approval, whether it's a special use permit or anything, in this case, it's a B1 permit. That's a zoning entitlement. They have to get that first. That's where they know that they're welcome and wanted and can, can do what they want to do in a particular location. Once that steps out of the way, again, whether it's a variance or a special use permit, or in this case, a B1 permit, then they can proceed with, with getting building permits. So that'll be their next step. We do that on purpose because we don't want someone spending tens of thousands of dollars fixing up a building, and then they come in for a zoning approval, and you guys say, oh, we don't want that there. So.
That makes sense.
Excuse me. So tonight, we voting on, we vote on the building permit? Is it the first step?
No. So what you're voting on now is a zoning approval. It's a B1 permit. It means you want this business, this use, at this location. And if you vote to approve it, then they can come into my department and apply for building permits. And they'll simultaneously have to go to Ginny's department and apply for a business license, sort of two parallel tracks. And both of those tracks involve inspections. So my department will do thorough inspections on the electrical systems, the plumbing systems, the structural integrity of the building, et cetera. Excuse me, and the fire department will also do inspections.
Okay, thank you, Bruce. I appreciate that.
I think the, knowing the Sinclair family, I think there's been a lot of hesitation from the kids at getting her to make a decision as far as selling or not selling. That's why it remained vacant for quite a while. So really, all we're doing is approving a, if we approve it, a B1 permit to allow a pizza place to remain a pizza place.
Correct.
And we're confident, and I agree with trustee Brady, the health department does a thorough job, and they will make sure it's up to par. So trustee Barker.
I would, I would just like to say, I love their story, and I love their connection to the community. And if this works out, I'd be happy to be their first customer, Uncle Pete's Pizza.
You'll have to be the second customer.
Frank and I'll go together.
All right.
But that would be just a, a nice thing to see that turn back into something and to keep it pizza. Who doesn't like pizza?
Just a quick comment, Mayor. You know, I, I mean, I agree with trustee Brady. It does need some work, but I just wanted to kind of thank you for your commitment and, and the investment, because it is going to take a lot. And I'm sure you're going to undertake it and do a nice job, like those other facilities you showed us. But thanks for bringing it back, and, you know, hopefully I'll be joining trustee Brady in a nice, clean establishment that looks a lot different than it does now. But I'm sure you'll do a good job. We appreciate it.
Thank you. And Uncle Pete's Pizza goes back years, so it's well-known in Westmont. So, but I do need a motion.
Motion to approve, Little.
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Guzzo.
Motion made in second to approve. Any additional comments? Anybody in the audience? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Motion passes. Now, how soon do you think you would like to open? Tomorrow?
No, my experience, sir, is that you can never know when it comes to negotiating with the different inspectors of what you have. But I assure you, we're going to try to do it as quickly as we possibly can. We want to, I would, I mean, I really thought we'd be older right now, I'd be quite frank with you. But I'm, I always have like a bad memory, and I forget the process takes much longer than I anticipate. But I believe we have, I mean, all of our ducks on the road, we're ready to go to work and then get the permit issued, sir.
Good. And I know you probably have met Larry Forsberg. If you haven't, he's the executive director of the Chamber. He'll work with you to get things promoted or ribbon cutting. So make sure you contact him.
Thank you, Mayor. That's great. No, we're, I don't think we're really blowing your day, but not, maybe we're really excited about that.
We're looking forward to it.
Thank you. We all.
We'll move on to the Westmont Historical Society Plaque Program. Board to consider an ordinance approving the Westmont Historical Society's program to designate historic buildings in the village with decorative plaques. Manager May.
I did put my name under there, but Bruce is prepared to.
Oh, Director Sylvester.
Sure. So the Westmont Historical Society has presented this concept to you when you were seated as a committee a couple of weeks, or maybe it's been a couple of months ago now. I think, and I hope you're familiar with what they're proposing. The reason it requires a vote is, as you all know, Westmont has very good and very tight regulations on signage. And when people want to put any sort of signage on their buildings, they need to get a building permit. But there's a provision in the ordinance that says nonprofits can do sort of a signage program, like what the Historical Society is proposing, without having to get a permit for every single little plaque they want to put up. If you are informed of the proposal and then vote to approve it, and that's what they're, what you're being asked to do tonight. There is a representative here if you have questions.
Is Uncle Pete's building one of them, historic?
It's, it's for all.
Look into it. All right, come on up, Alice, if you. I'm going to get you up to that podium, no matter what. Unless you want John to talk.
John, John, no, I, so I've already presented the, the stuff to you before. We're looking forward to getting a plaque up. We're hoping to get the first one up on September, in September at Frame Makers Barb's, because hers is one of the old buildings. There are several buildings, obviously, throughout the town. We have an anonymous donor for, who will be paying for these initial plaques. And we're hoping to do two or three a year in the beginning. And eventually, there's been interest in placking some homes. However, the people that have older homes and that would qualify, that would, they would have to pay for those. This is just going to end up turning into, you know, hopefully a, a good thing for our community, and it will be a part of our walking tour.
Alice, can you, when you say historic, is there a year threshold?
Yes, yes. So we're, we were pretty lenient about, about this, but we're, we want the, the home to be at least 50 years old and have historic significance. And so we've, we've put in there kind of a, a little bit of a threshold. 1941, 42, World War II is kind of the stopping area. However, there is an interesting home in Westmont. It's called the Lustron Home, and it's all steel exterior. And that was built in like 1950, so it's of historic significance from the perspective of the type of home that it is. So there might be one or two exceptions, but for the most part, the home has to be at least 50 years old and have historic significance.
Do I have a motion to approve the ordinance?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Nero.
Motion made second. Additional comments? How many have you designated right now? How many do you know that you?
So our list right now, well, we're, like I said, we're starting out with just a couple each year, but we've got, for example, Merrick Bakery, which is the KC Hall. Uncle John's Music is actually from 1922. The First Barber Shop over here on Burlington. Lindstrom's Bakery, Kohut's, absolutely delicious. The Uptown Tavern, and the Westmont Theater. So that's one, two, three, four. That's about eight that we want to, you know, really designate as important, as well as Pleasures, which is the pharmacy on the corner. So thank you very much. We appreciate.
We haven't voted yet.
Oh, please, I'm begging you.
Any other, any other comments, questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Motion passed.
So now I can say thank you. All right, very good.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, very good.
Thanks.
Thank you.
New business E, Engineering Services Agreement. 2021 MFT Resurfacing Project. Board to consider ordinance authorizing an engineering agreement with Primera Engineering for Phase Two. Engineering Design Services for Phase Three Construction Inspection Engineering on the 2021 MFT Street Resurfacing Project. And I guess, Manager May.
Mayor, thank you. The, and I probably should have mentioned this when I was talking about purchase orders, because the purchase order you approved for this is just the encumbering that amount of money for this agreement, but this is the actual agreement for your approval. The 2021 MFT or Motor Fuel Tax Resurfacing Project is the mass street resurfacing that we, well, used to do every year, but haven't done for a while, so we have a, you know, a significant fund built up, and we'll have a pretty big project this year. The plans, because it is Motor Fuel Tax, it's regulated by the State of Illinois, the construction is, or the use of the Motor Fuel Tax Funds through the Illinois Department of Transportation. So this engineering services is to put together the plans and specifications to put it out to bed. That's the Phase Two part. The Phase Three part is the construction inspection services that go with the project.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Guzzo.
Second, Nero.
Motion made second to approve. Any additional comments? Anybody in the audience? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business F, Engineering Service Agreement. Quincy Street Streetscape Project. Board to consider ordinance authorizing an engineering agreement with Primera Engineering for Phase One and Phase Two Design Engineering for the proposed Quincy Street Streetscape Project. Manager May.
So this design engineering, also Primera, the project itself is the, we're calling it the Streetscape, but West Quincy from Cass Avenue to Lincoln Street. We've talked about it before at committee, but on the north side of the street, along the depot, the Addington Plaza improvements are going on. On the south side, the gist of the project is, the south side of the street has a lot of pavement in place occupied by angle parking, and the experiences over, through all the pandemic protocols with the outdoor seating, you know, lessons learned, but also opportunities recognized that the Streetscape design would include a design to reconfigure that side of the street to afford more parkway space for usable public gathering, outdoor dining, or other, or other purposes. So this is the, just the engineering services agreement for that project, to do a design to get your input and get an estimated cost, and hopefully a buildable project in the spring.
And with several other restaurants gonna be moving in on the street, it becomes really a restaurant row almost, so. And with Brood awakening there too, and Dolce. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Barker.
Second, Little.
Motion made second. Additional comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll move on to new business G, Automatic Mutual Aid Agreement, Village of Clerton Hills Fire Department. The next three will be the same type of mutual aid. Board to consider ordinance approving an automatic aid agreement between the Village of Westmont through its fire department and Clerton Hills Fire Department. Deputy Chief O'Hare.
Yes, so the purpose of this agreement is to provide for the automatic mutual aid between the Westmont Fire Department and the Clerton Hills Fire Department for emergencies, including the dispatch of medic, engine, ladder, and squad companies, communication vehicles, chiefs, and specialty vehicles simultaneously with necessary equipment and personnel to the stricken community to predetermine areas in the event of an emergency.
Is this the one that we talked about that we approved last meeting? It's just updating something we've had in place?
Chief O'Hare talked about these three agreements last meeting.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So move, Guzzo. Second, Little.
Second.
Motion made in second. This one's to approve the mutual aid agreement at Village of Clerton Hills. Any additional comments?
Just a comment for all three of them, Mayor. Just wanted to thank the fire department for being proactive in doing all these and cleaning up one of them that we didn't have for many years. And I know it's directly related to our ISO rating and these types of things in an audit, so thank you.
I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business H, Automatic Mutual Aid Agreement, Village of Downers Grove Fire Department. Board to consider ordinance approving an automatic aid agreement between the Village of Westmont through its fire department and Downers Grove Fire Department. Deputy Chief O'Hare, the same.
This is the same agreement.
Do I need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Guzzo.
Second, Nero.
Motion made in second.